Aloha, I'm Jason Schwartz, normally your host here at the Neutral Zone. But I'm a candidate and I've been interviewing other candidates. I thought it appropriate to bring in my original sponsor for the show, Nick Drantz. Nick Drantz created a major impact here in 2018 when he created a lot of conversation and excitement about his website, The Maui Miracle. And Nick, thank you for being here with me. I would hope that you would treat me like a candidate and ask me questions. And please, as we're going, any positions you want to offer and establish, please do. I respect you. And that's the reason I brought you here to give the public a chance to revisit with you. And if it's almost like catch it up to date from all that you've been doing.
Okay, I'll put my, let me interview the candidate hat on. But in any case, well, Jason, you know, you're running for the Kahului Council seat. And you know, I've known you for so many years. You know, I know a lot about you. And so to endorse you as a candidate is pretty easy. And that seat actually is interesting because Tasha Kamakama is the incumbent. And I fought very hard to get her elected, among others, as part of, you know, a new beginning on Maui, which has been fabulously successful. But to my surprise, and the surprise of many, many others, it turned out that she pretty much voted in lockstep with what I consider to be money interests, the administration, developers, you know, anything that was progressive related to, you know, the future of Maui and bold innovative ideas that helped the island and people. She joined the other two and just, you know, voted against those things, including the two-year hotel moratorium, which is now expanded. So that's the seat that you are running in.
And that's why I have five others challenging also. It's a seven-person primary. So that's a lot to say. A lot of interest in her seat.
Yeah. And the only, you know, the only other person, I like you the most, but the only other, my second best is Karalee Kamakona. Because you're both salt of the earth. I completely trust, you know, both of you. You know, the other, the difference is that because you are, you have the Akaku Program, the Neutral Zone. And this is something that fascinates me and I think makes you uniquely qualified for this council seat, is that over these many years, you have interviewed, you know, the mayor, council members, dignitaries, scientists, hundreds of people over the years. And so you have gotten so much information and a lot of it innovative, innovative stuff. This is one of the things that makes you uniquely qualified for that position. Because unlike anyone else, you can contribute ideas that you've heard from the best of the best. And not, and because, this is the clincher, because you're neutral and you're objective, you're not particularly pushing an agenda, you're getting along with people and putting forth ideas that everybody should consider. Because who can make a good decision if they don't have all of the information? So your Neutral Zone, which you've dedicated many years to, gives you a tremendous edge in your candidacy.
Well, thank you. I think that the idea of a neutral zone is good for everything. But imagine in the sales situation where you're, if someone's there, their job is to listen to you, but say no. Your job is to get them to say yes. So one of the early things I learned in sales was to create a rapport. And one way is not be confronting someone. Slide around and be on their side of the table. So a round table, a neutral zone, where people come in and talk about things, where we leave our swords at the door. We're not interested in slicing each other and discovering our differences as much as we're looking to see what we can agree on, what we do agree on. And then those differences can either fall away or again, now both parties, all parties are interested in finding a solution to serve everyone. Sounds a little light, but I think it really has shown over the years to be a really effective tool.
Well, this is a sore point with me because there are three council members that constantly, without balance, they vote against anything progressive, anything related to, you know, serious environmental stuff, you know, the ocean, even some of the innovative, you know, job programs and other things. It so consistently vote along with what I consider money interests at the administration and so forth. There's no balance there. But other than, other than this, just to follow up on the comment that you made, the council being comprised of members from all the districts, and they all have to work together, as you say, and come to a consensus and share their various ideas. You know, some people are chair of this committee and that committee. But generally, most committee members, council members, are on most committees. So they all have to share ideas. And this is where, this is a bright spot for you because you have all those ideas. You've gained so many ideas and you sit at the same side of the table with everybody to put forth those ideas in a neutral way. And this is the way the council is supposed to work together.
What I haven't seen of those positions you're talking about that are voted against, I think that the transparency of government demands someone to explain their positions more so that we can understand why they would vote. I mean, we all come to understand why would someone be consistently voting against these issues that we hold and embrace as really important. That, I think, is what's needed because then the voting gets easier.
You're absolutely right. And I think it's strange that the system doesn't allow communication, public communication to the council members. I've testified at numerous council meetings. And you can hear the public say things to the council, but you never have a conversation. And according to, you know, protocol, Robert's Rules of Order, they're not allowed to have a conversation with you unless they want to clarify something. So this issue about, and I'm fascinated by it. I'd be very curious to ask those three people, why are you voting against the visitor accommodation moratorium? That's so-called hotel moratorium for the two years. If everybody else is voting for it and it's popular among residents, why are you voting against it?
Wouldn't that be a fair thing to understand and hear?
It would. But we're not allowed to, according to protocol. So that's why, you know, during election time, you know, that's a great time for the public to actually ask that. But anyway, in any case.
Actually, just so you should know, I only have one more interview in my interview series. And that is with the incumbent, which is a very different thing you'll see done. Because I'm going to ask those kind of questions exactly. Why did you vote against it? And we'll see if the answer satisfies anybody. It can't if it still gave you the wrong answer. If you're voting against the moratorium when you know we're up to here with things, there's got to be some reason. I don't know how it's going to satisfy anyone.
Well, that's a fascinating scenario because you're interviewing an opponent. But on the other hand, you're the neutral zone. So you're just simply objectively asking the question, but not with an agenda.
Not with an attack. Basically, really asking, why would you vote against something like that? I mean, and they'll say, well, there was some detail. I asked her once before privately, and she said, there were some details in it that I didn't really feel comfortable with.
What details?
That's right. And the public is squawking. You've got to tell somebody what those details were. Anyway.
Yeah. And I know more about, you know, that situation. But I can tell you that Tasha, I love Tasha Kamakama. She's like a wonderful, wonderful person. I don't like the way she votes. I don't like her politics, you know, none of that. And I don't think she's right for that job. But as a person and a human being, she's fabulous. And that's why I supported her candidacy so strong.
And I too. And you may not recall, but I moved aside from running then to clear the path and not make a muddy kind of situation. It's so muddy now with six and seven people. Can you imagine all of us before the primary trying to figure out how to get our message out somehow to the public? How are they going to vote when they don't know who these people are? It's a strange system.
Well, it's tough. You know, it's tough on Maui. And this has been one of the challenges with the maumiracle.org, where, you know, my faith level kind of comes and goes. You know, in 2017, when it was founded, the idea, objective was to get a greater number of voters involved so that they felt empowered to, you know, make the future the way they envisioned it. Because I think a lot of people feel disenfranchised. And they don't realize that the miracle is all you have to do is show up and vote in great numbers. And generally, I think residents want, you know, the health of the island and their own welfare to come ahead of. You know, looking at Maui as the goose with the golden egg. And, you know, for development and a place to build luxury homes for people that don't live here while we have, you know, a housing problem. So.
You know, these issues have been longstanding. And this cycle of elections, that's two years, keeps a pattern of them deferring for many years important issues. Because in a blink, they were out of that job. They weren't given enough runway to take off with some of these ideas, is what they'll tell you. But they've left all those problems for now. So thank goodness, we're still on it. And without that, like you said, without the hope and the feeling like there's something good, people won't go and vote. They don't want to feel like they're, they think they have no way that they can make a difference. But it is huge. If they step up and vote, that's what turns the boat.
Well, and what I have to step back and look at as founder of The Maui Miracle is actually, we are so close to The Maui Miracle being a reality. I mean, I suppose it was always an ideal pie in the sky. You know, I hope this happens. I want it to happen. But when I step back and realize so much progress has been made since that 2018 election, it's astounding. And those council members who are, you know, responsible for that.
Well, they've done a great job. When we think about Kelly King and Shane Sinancy and Gabe Johnson and Tamara Paulton. And I know we can keep going. But like you say, we run into a, it's not even like a voting block, but it sure appears that way. And you wonder, why are these people voting against things that are moving so swiftly? Because they're the right things, many see, and then they're not.
Well, that's why, and that's why I say this election, we're this close to The Maui Miracle coming almost to complete fruition, which is like an unimaginable thing where, you know, the voters, the great number of residents actually see the county establishing priorities that match theirs, which, you know, the county Maui Island Plan and Maui County Plan have a mission statement and core principles, which came from one of the largest, you know, sort of like research, for lack of a better term, survey of 1,800 people on the island years ago. And that's where the policy of the county came from, embodied in these core principles and missions statement. And by and large, residents wanted preservation of the small-town atmosphere, the integrity of the island, it's the character and nature of the island. I mean, that's what, it's documented. That's what they want. And like, well, why would a long-term resident want a bunch more hotels, a bunch more traffic, a bunch more shopping centers, you know, and a bunch more luxury homes for people that live here? What's in it for them? Why would they want that? Well, they don't. So this election is critical because there's three or four seats, yours included. That is pivotal. So.
Come, let me ask you a question that you may wonder. Why is Alice Lee, after being on council so long, still running? Why isn't she operating as a magnanimous citizen and coming down and testifying and having the wisdom of her experience, but passing the baton to someone else? Why is Ricky Hokama, after running and running and running, deciding to run again, when the man in his seat, Gabe Johnson, has been such a fantastic leader in being able to create this dream that we talk about? That's the questions to me.
Well, there are a lot of mysteries with Maui County Government. The Nepali debacle is one of them. It's so, it's so unimaginable that things happen with impunity. But as far as Ricky goes, this was reported in, you know, the Maui News and Maui Now, that he has already exceeded his term limits. You know, the council added this to the charter that they want term limits, and he's already exceeded his. So I don't even understand how he can run. Were you saying that Alice Lee didn't reach her term limits, did she?
When I was starting the Maui Arts and Music Association way back in the early 90s, Alice Lee was on council. That's 30 years ago. Do you want to talk about how many terms Alice Lee has been on? Maybe four here and three there, maybe there are five in a row. But she took a break, came back. She's been a constant, really. And when Dane, there was Dane Conne, who ran for mayor, right? And then when Dane Conne ran for mayor, Mike Victorino slipped into the Waileku seat. And then from the Waileku seat, he went toward where he is now.
Oh, so that's how that happened?
That's how that happened, you see? And Alice Lee used to be up-country. Now she's in Waileku.
Well, you know, that's an interesting thing because the representative in up-country, which is Yuki Lee Sugamura, and again, she, her voting position is completely opposite of what I think is healthy for the island and residents' welfare and so forth. I mean, to me, she votes with money interests, which the administration does. So that's that. And it's interesting that those two switched. I had no knowledge of that.
Well, I think she was a Mako Alpaia haiku, but up-country. But also, it used to be that, that seat you're talking about, Yuki, was Charmaine Tavares for a while. And you're right, though. But I just think that people that are on the council for a long time still have all their great wisdom. They could be diplomats and statesmen. Instead, they want to stay elected representatives and stop the growth of new, new strong growth, which I don't understand. That's like keeping an old forest, knowing that they're, they're blocking the shade of new things to grow. It's like the old thing about how do you, to make this move forward, you have to put some new blood in. And the new blood has proven themselves that they've shown it. Like I'm talking specifically about Gabe Johnson. He's an extraordinary, powerful, positive guy.
He's chair of the, what is it? It's not Housing and Human Concerns. I forget the name of the committee.
Well, I think affordable housing. They have a.
Affordable housing. And interestingly enough, in the last, since the last few years, we have made significant progress towards affordable housing to the point where I'm astounded. And Kelly King, just to mention, you were talking about people who are, you know, dedicated, moving on. Kelly King is responsible for a tremendous amount of affordable housing initiatives in South Kihei. But when you were mentioning Alice Lee and these other people, and by the way, Alice Lee is an honest person. We just, like Yuki, we just disagree. But I don't think that she's dishonest at all. She just has a different, you know, vision for Maui. But Kelly King, she really revolutionized the council structure by completely changing the committee structure. You know, the committees used to be, they mirrored county departments. And then the councils, their activities were, you know, pretty tame without going into a big detail. So Kelly changed the committee structure so that they were aspirational. And I said, they're inspirational. But she's the one that said, okay, let's focus on a committee for the environment, one for affordable housing, you know, one for economic development, one for culture. However, I don't have the committees in front of me.
Right. Well, she broke it into functional committees based on important issues in the community and not an old structure that was locked into keeping the old way. I mean, that's what we keep seeing, that the old way likes to stay the old way. But where Kelly King and breaking through the aspirational goals of the council, to aspire to greatness along the lines of something important to the community is such much better way to go. I'm excited that she's running for mayor. This has become a very interesting and highly contested mayor race.
I'm fascinated by it because, you know, Mike Molina doesn't always, you know, I don't always see eye to eye with him. But I think he's leveled it. And he's reasonable. And he has, his voting record, I think, has moved a little bit more towards, you know, things that relate to the health of the island and maybe against things that are not, you know, for money interests and mainland things and stuff like that. So, you know, I don't think he would be a bad mayor. But Kelly has a track record in the council of phenomenal success in major, major things. And imagine her being mayor.
Well, again, and a lot of people have imagined, you can imagine, when I did an interview with her, she said, Jason, there's people that are coming at me and they want me to run for mayor if they can get that kind of enthusiasm that I need. Obviously, she is motivating people in our community to be their greatest selves and to continue that kind of effort with her being mayor. Who knows what good things can happen?
You know, she, she is that way. But, you know, she was running for state government. And I think it was Tina Wildberger's State House representative position. And as I understand it, a group of people came to her at the last minute. They should have done it maybe earlier. But, and they absolutely insisted that she run for mayor. And, you know, she was going to run for state house position. And their arguments were so compelling, she said, okay, I'm going to do it. And I hope, you know, I hope she wins because if she does, whoa. That's like, you know, being, being a business owner, not only is she knowledgeable about the, this is now campaigning for her. Not only is she proactive with, you know, climate change, protecting the island, the environment, you know, really forward-looking, which is something that you and I talked about. Let's get back to that. Not only that, but she is a business owner. So it's not all like pie in the sky. And she and her husband have had Pacific Bio Diesel for years. And that's an award-winning company that has done amazing innovative things. So, you know, she's, you know, she's not only visionary, but she's, you know, a business person. But when you and I were talking earlier, just to get back to you, you were talking about, as you mentioned just now, same old, same old. You know, we don't want that. We want some bold new ideas. And you said something about, you know, New Horizons and the future. Based on all the knowledge you got from all your interviews.
Well, you know, technology is so much further ahead at solving problems than seem to be delivered to people that have the capacity to move those into action. I've spoken to people that have been on my show that talked about taking our green waste and turning it into power. I'm using broad example. Or couple of different ways to create water, take water from the air and purify it so that we don't have to distribute water, don't have to distribute power. Change the idea of what can happen in open space. We don't, we can now use different areas that were never possible to be considered for living and leaving open space, things like growing, et cetera. There are, our world now with all its technological advances mean that many of our people, instead of having to get into a local work environment, can work more globally. So take the burden off to having to keep building out this infrastructure to create jobs here, to be able to diversify economy, to be able to let our people enjoy a greater pool with their work as we give them more skills through, again, helping the education get better. I think that.
That's important. The Maui Economic Board, their sole purpose is to help provide, you know, opportunities for economic development. And this is one of the interesting things that segues into, you know, people's positions on the council. Because like, for example, more hotels, okay. You know, I think we need diversity. Look what happened, you know, during COVID. These people can't, so many moved off the island. They can't even, you know, afford to live here. So a bunch of new hotels creating, you know, not high-paying jobs, you know, with a future. I don't know that that's the long-term sustainable future for Maui.
Well, and you know, when I think of hotels, all I immediately focus on is the west-side traffic craziness to me. You know, where would we put these hotels? We're going to stack them? Are we going to create a multi-level highway to try to deal with it? And it's crazy. It's like there's, nobody can deny overtourism. We have too many bodies. We don't have enough, we don't have enough infrastructure nor island space to build. Why would we think to build more?
Well, you're right. When this, when Kelly King introduced this moratorium and it's visitor and transient accommodations is technically what it is. People call it the hotel moratorium, but it's visitor and transient accommodations. When that was being debated, both in committee and in the council, a number of people said, look, this business about overtourism, it's something that, you know, University of Hawaii has talked about, the UN, you know, even the Maui Tourism Bureau of all people. It's so well-documented. And there's additional academic studies about this where it's not just some like, oh, I'm a liberal, I'm like, you know, pie in the sky. I want this to happen. No, it's coming from the highest levels of government and academia about this thing that you're talking about, overtourism. And it's so, you know, it's documented. It's not just like some, oh, I just feel like this or that. So when Kelly introduced that, and then, you know, Keane did it in a different way. And it ended up passing, the mayor vetoed it, and then they vetoed his veto. And so now it's, you know, now it's a reality. But you're talking about the traffic and solutions. The original purpose of it was just to buy us time to find solutions. And, and which, I mean, you know, to me, I think, well, the solution is we're building, you know, new hotels and focus on, you know, diversified economy and stuff like that. But you talk about traffic on the west side. I live on the south side. It's like traffic jams down South Kihei Road as far as the eye can see. I see people standing in line for Kihei Cafe. And there must be like 100 people all the way around. And why, why do they wait in line? The traffic, I mean, it goes from, from the park all the way back to Cam 3, from Cam 1 to Cam 3. And then Pealani Highway, of course, now with this roundabout and all this other stuff. There are traffic jams from people leaving their hotel jobs in Wailea, going towards other places, you know, up-country, wherever. And Pealani looks like. And Pealani looks like the mainland already. So, you know, when I talk to visionary people like you who are not necessarily tied into mainland business model, you know, and all of that, more oriented towards, you know, stewardship over the island and residents, you know, I think you're the guy that would really help the health of the island.
I think so also. And I think, you know, a, a lot of the things that I've seen happen have happened because people were sitting on their heels and didn't think it was important for them to be involved. So right now, this is critical. We're at a really critical place. We've come so far toward it, but we could easily fall backward just by a regime that holds that status quo position right now. Or at the end of a moratorium period, we aren't gonna hold to what is important before they lift it and suddenly allow for another window of more tourism growth. It's gotta be real continuity here. Very important time.
Well, you know, you're right. I don't know, uh, a lot of the people that are running. I know, uh, I know the incumbents, of course, and I know, you know, those people that I, uh, uh, like yourself or Carol Lee, people that I really believe in. Uh, but from what I can tell, without doing a whole like research project, I think a great number of the people that are running for these seats are running because big business, mainland business interests, you know, a mainland business model is something that they believe in. And they want to get on the council in order to promote that.
Well, I don't know. I think a lot of this climate that's happened nationally and the thing with the vaccination and no vaccination has emboldened, is that the right word? A lot of people that maybe never even wanted or thought they could be or are potentially good candidates for politics are jumping in and they, because they don't like the, the status quo. And they're not being careful on what they're jumping in, they're just jumping in. And there are so many people running now and, and there's really hardly any way to know who they are before the, the primary election.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Well, you know, uh, Yuki Lee Sugamura is up for reelection. Alice Lee, I think, as you mentioned, uh, Ricky is, you know, from the old guard, uh, wanting to, uh, replace Gabe. Uh, and then, of course, you know, the Kahului seat, uh, with you. And these, really, these races are the most important because they will, uh, determine whether, uh, developers.
And Makawalpa Ihaiku, I mean, Mike Molina leaving that seat uh, create a possibility of a, of a very conservative, very strong development advocate, suddenly getting in because his name is known and then no one knows anybody else. It's scary what lack of, of appropriate media coverage or can do by omission. I think that's the part, some of these names of people that have been around, have been around a long time, different than me. They've been in very conservative, supportive positions. And around here, if you don't know the name, you're looking for a name, you know, it's some way to know who these people are.
Well, what do you mean by conservative? Cause conservatives isn't, you know, necessarily bad. I mean, I, I, I feel like I have a balanced point of view, you know, I'm neither conservative nor liberal, but you're, are you associating?
Well, I'm, I'm bringing it to, uh, I just don't name names here, but development. Someone that is pro-development, more development of the tourism industry. A very strong, uh, supporter and support staff for others that were very strong development of the tourist industry.
That's like going from, it's like going from a government position, Rick Perry is a good example. Going from a government position, or in his case, actually private industry in the energy sector with oil and then becoming Secretary of, uh, Energy, uh, in, in the government. And, and then, you know, and now what you're talking about is a reverse thing where, you know, you have business executives from either real estate or developers or something like that. And then they get on the council and you know what, how they're gonna vote. Uh, they're gonna, and every opportunity, just like those three that I mentioned, they're gonna promote, you know, additional development. And as you say, this is pivot, this is a pivotal time.
Right, we have to basically, it's, it's like holding back the dam, uh, holding back the water long enough to build a strong, uh, wall to block that. I think it's very critical. That up-country seat in Paia Makuaiku, to me, has no identifiable leader except the names we know, and that concerns me. But, um, there's some interesting and young creative people that are running in that seat. Again, I am, you know, I, I imagine that once you sit in that seat, all, what, all the things you thought about it change a little bit because you're in.
Well, that's what happened to your opponent. As I say, uh, I worked very hard for her and I like her very much privately. We share very similar, uh, family values, spiritual values. Uh, you know, we, I, I call her my sister. We're, you know, we like each other very much. But, uh, when she was campaigning, she appeared to have a certain position. And then once she took office, uh, all, she completely changed. And she gave an explanation for that, which, you know, mm, okay. But, you know, we are so close to the Maui miracle where residents and voters really are in charge of what happens on the island instead of, you know, mainland business interests and developers. We're so close to residents being the ones that call the shots. Uh, we're this close to it. And if Kelly King became mayor, you know, she's not beholden to anybody. And she, as a business owner, she, I mean, this current council, these people that are so-called liberals, our budget, the county budget is balanced, it's healthy. The tax code was revamped, you know, in favor of residents, uh, to put a proper burden on, uh, you know, hotels and so forth, but not unreasonably so. Uh, and so fiscally, these guys that people refer to as liberals have done a spectacular job. Uh, but she's, she's voted against a lot of those things. Uh, it, you know, it's very strange, but the Maui miracle includes fiscal responsibility and, uh, forward thinking, which you were talking about, visionary forward thinking, uh, that relates to the stewardship of the island and residents.
I was thinking about it when someone asked about what do you do to diversify things? And I thought about tax incentives. When you create tax incentives, you gotta find where are you gonna get those dollars that you need to run things from somewhere else? So that is quite a game trying to be fiscally responsible. And yet, and not pull money out of the game because you need that money. So how do you create an incentive without, that's an interesting thing. Well, like you sure, you shared, those that have will have to bear the burden more. That I think is the way to do it. It's not very popular with those that have more, that feel they're gonna be bearing an unfair burden. But I think we've, you know, you and I have a very popular opinion. It's called, you have to take care of her. We're all in this together, especially on an island.
Yeah, well, you're, you know, you're absolutely right about that. Uh, but a lot of, a lot of the people that you're talking about have second and third homes here. Uh, and whether they're, you know, some of them are residents, some of them are not. Uh, but, uh, you know, if somebody is, who is a resident, is wealthy, I don't think necessar, or a business owner, I don't think necessarily, you know, they have anything to worry about. And certainly, uh, you know, county government and the, it, it, policy has done more to hurt everybody but business people. So, you know, I think, uh, you know, something that's fair and equitable, balance. That's the most important thing that I care about is balance. And that's the issue that I have with those three council members or four sometimes. Uh, because they just always vote with the same pro-development, pro, uh, mainland business model without exception almost. So.
And you've heard now people complaining that are in businesses that the mayor shut them down. So they've been upset that the, the mayor has shut down the business. So it's, it's a very funny and fickle public. You don't really know in a given moment what they're going to think is their priority.
Well, you know, you have to remain neutral. I don't. And, uh, in this, in this last, well, I mean, it's your philosophy, you know.
Well, meaning I'm not gonna hear stabbing, like I don't wanna name people, but yeah, I try to be a little bit off the pedal. But you're out there giving it to them. Good.
Well, you have to work with everybody and you choose to. And that's a, you know, very, you're very, you know, diplomatic. Uh, but speaking of the mayor, uh, I looked at where his campaign donations were coming from. And a tremendous amount of dollars came from Honolulu and the mainland. And it may, and I was like horrified. It's like, well, you know, who are you, uh, uh, who are you? Who's your allegiance to? You know, Honolulu and the mainland, that's business interest. And that's why, you know, county administration, uh, the county policy is largely, uh, oriented towards their benefit rather than residents and, you know, stewardship over the island.
And they're not the only one that has big money coming from the mainland or Honolulu. Not only is it our present mayor, but a couple of the candidates running. Oh, good. You, you wonder on the way in, where, who are they beholden to?
Yeah, it, it, it's, that's, uh, a really depressing thing is that if voters are unaware. Uh, I, I want people to vote and I, on the Maui Miracle website, there's a section about government. It says, how's the structure of our government? Who's in there now? What are the committees? You know, how, all, all kinds of information, how to testify, council here. Uh, but that's to make people knowledgeable. But if people vote for people who just have more signs or more money, uh, you know, or something like that, if they don't vote wisely, uh, then, that, you know, then we shoot ourselves in the foot. But in any case, uh, just to get back to, you know, your, uh, attributes, your, uh, the thing that you have that nobody else has is that you've listened to hundreds of experts in, like, such diversified, like, give me some examples. You, you, it's been like from one extreme to the other of the spectrum of experts from different areas.
You know, the way I've gotten guests for my show are based on things that interest me that would solve problems, the things that have come to me over time.
Exactly.
They came to me, many of them come toward me because they see I have that open attitude. I like to talk about the water one. There are so many solutions for the water that I haven't heard. One that I didn't hear at all, which has nothing to do with new technology. The largest lens, like an underwater lake of fresh water under Haiku, larger than the water in Oahu.
I didn't know that.
Well, because I was gonna buy a property out there some years ago we found that there was a lake, a freshwater lake down there. It came to be understood that people, whoever's in the water area knew about it, but they didn't wanna talk about it because they were afraid it would allow rampant development to happen and point that they have enough water to do that development. So I appreciate, but that will kind of water supply might, if added into the thing, into the system, could provide water for all the food that gets created on this island, allow the natural flow of water to then pull from a source, like I say, when I talk about enough water larger than Oahu, larger than the, the freshwater supply of a place with 10 times the population, et cetera. This might be a time to really take a look at all our resources.
Well, this is where stewardship over the environment has a real, you know, direct impact, uh, you know, over, you know, what, what goes on, the, uh, East Maui, uh, what's the name of it? East Maui, it's Water District, it's like, it's, there's the Waluku, and then there's East Maui. And that has a long history with A and B and then.
And the taking of the water and moving that water, all that.
And redistributing. And of course, the Hawaiians are never happy about the fact that this, they are part of the Ina. And their culture, their taro fields, all of that stuff, stream diversions that, that interrupt, you know, their natural habitat and things like that, like they, they have a tough battle to fight. And so what people don't realize is that what happens to that big, huge water supply is largely determined about what is said in the council. So, you know, this.
But, but we also know that if we take and reclaim all the water and control the water and let all the food die, that's not gonna be so clever either. But we have solutions right now. Uh, and I talk about water from air. People think that's like some new thing. Condensation of water out of the air is not something new, but the fact that they can do it efficiently now and bring it down to, in a modular size to be able to handle a single residence or a group of residents.
Yeah.
Is, that allows us to leave open space, open space. It leaves us to use water wherever else it's being used and not have to create these giant siphons. The more, the more development, the more water is being needed.
Well, that's another reason for, uh, development. We, we, we have drought years, sometimes, sometimes not talking about, you know, the way the water is, and I don't wanna dwell on it too much. Uh, but, you know, because the island is only 742 square miles.
Right.
And it, it's not Miami Beach and it's not Orange County. And that's not what, Maui's a relatively sacred, uh, island. A lot of people come from around the world to pray because they feel that Maui is sacred as I do. Uh, so it's not Miami Beach and it's not meant to build more shopping centers, hotels, luxury homes for people that don't live here. And that's why this election is so important because we have some, you know, progress, as you mentioned, uh, uh, Keane, uh, Rollins Fernandez, Tamara, uh, Gabe Johnson, uh, just to name a, a few.
Shane, Sinancy.
Shane, of course. And he's in charge, he's chair of the, uh, agriculture and what is Su- Sustainability Committee, I believe.
To me, they, that's a blurry line between economic climate change and sustainability. To me, they get, they're very overlapping.
Well, he's, he's done great things as chair of that committee. And actually Kelly King has done spectacular things, uh, as chair of the, uh, Climate Action, uh, and Resiliency, uh, Environment Committee, you know, CARE for short, they all have, uh, acronyms. And as chair of that committee, she's done unbelievable things. And, and like you, uh, she has hosted people.
Right.
On, on panels, uh, uh, to.
So she has lots of potential resources to solve problems that aren't being looked at.
Yeah, just like you. And she's open, uh, to sharing all of these ideas. Um, you know, so that, these, these are good things. Well, Jason, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
In this endeavor, uh, I've, I've known you for a long time. I know that you're an honest man, uh, full of ideas. And I, I think as you.
And my, uh, my ideas, I'm cutting you off only in that. I am not the ideas. I am just the vessel. I mean, I have original ideas, but a lot of what I think is because I've been exposed to so many things that don't seem like they fit together, but we know they all fit together. They're all important.
So in, in one way or the other, but you can help others to make balanced decisions. And you yourself can make a balanced decision. And, and it's all, you know, based on, uh, you know, good information. So, uh, in any case, I think that your desire for public service, of course, you, uh, have, you know, you have previously run for office, uh, you were, uh, worked with, uh, Maui Electric on.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, when I got here in the late eighties with a high-tech equipment to make a cogeneration solar system, I started digging in and looking and found, in fact, I came here because utility rates were high. And when I went and talked to the utilities, they were just coming upon a, an advisory board to plan the 20-year energy future of the island. And I've been involved in solar energy on the mainland. And this group, this Integrated Resource Planning Advisory Board, yeah, were shown in detail many of the technologies that we now looking at here today. 20 years ago, 30 years ago. 20 years ago, 30 years ago.
You mentioned solar and now solar and wind provide a great deal of, you know, energy for us. And I think, you know, I think we are paying like, it's probably about 38 cents a kilowatt now. And on the mainland in different places, it's 13 cents. So, I mean, obviously if you're putting, if you were pushing solar 20 or 30 years ago, you know, that was so innovative, but.
Well, and what, what happened is, as you can imagine, the status quo, the powers that be that were making money in a usual and regular way didn't want to hear of it. You know, they didn't want to hear of it. I don't like to be negative, so I won't go into detail, but it's not an unusual scenario, but it's even more critical on an island. I mean, it should have been embraced 20 and 30 years ago. I mean, don't you find it funny that around the world, when they look about which county in the United States is the most significantly advanced? It's Maui County about solar. Although no one will point and say it's Jason Schwartz. I've been talking about it a long.
Well, you, you know, you've, you've helped that. But in any case, you're, you've taken years of advocacy by getting the word out and, you know, giving, giving people a platform to share their ideas. Your advocacy now, as, as a public servant, now you've switched and you're running for this council seat because I think you feel like you could do more good.
I was just going to say, I, talking is great. But when you see the people you're talking to aren't taking the ideas to the logical next steps, I feel that it's time for me to move into a seat at the table to, to move things forward directly.
Well, and I, I, I agree with you, especially in the Kahului seat.
Well, it'll make a big difference in that balance you talked about.
That is a very, very important race. So Jason, I wish you well. And I, I hope that you are able to get your message out to more people so that they know what you stand for and what you're capable of doing. And, and the good contributions that you can make, not only for your own district, but for all districts. So I wish you the best.
Thank you. Well, you have been, you're a great, you're a great host and a questioner. I don't know if I gave you as many area detailed answers as you need. But I like to think that the most important thing is how someone thinks. I think that transparency piece is, something's got to be changed there. If we don't know why someone votes the way they do, then things can stay the way they are. We're never going to be putting their feet to the fire to clear the air and see what is it that's holding important aggressive things back.
Interesting that you mentioned that. And I'm trying to help you, us sign off, but Mike Molina, who's running for mayor, and I do like him, he's a reasonable man. He's chair of the Government Ethics and Transparency Committee, GET, G E T, Government. And it's interesting that this subject, which we're talking about transparency, which is so important to everybody. This thing about two-way conversation between the public in public, that has never come up. On the other hand, I will say that this Napili debacle way, 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 way months late, almost a year. But there's finally a little bit of visibility, official visibility through his, through his committee. So, you know, I, you know, those are, those are good things, but.
And, and I like to take my hat off to private citizens like a Sam Small who's been a champion and staying on these issues when they're not popular to have people keep talking about.
That's a whole other subject about people who have been advocates for, you know, the stewardship on Maui for up to 30 years devoting their life, but that's another subject.
Well, and when getting, when on council, the ability to pull from those resources, that's a really important, important piece that I, I don't think can be put aside. The ability to talk to and reach into the already rich Maui community to find those answers that are already here.
Contribution.
That need a little help in what they're doing to make what they're doing more broad.
Right. Well, you're just the man, you're just the man for the job. And I, I, I believe in you and I believe in your ability to really make a difference. So like I say, I wish you the best of luck and I hope you can get your message out to a great number of people.
Oh, thank you, Nick. And thank you for being our guest co-host. I think that we may have a spinoff and call it the Neutral Zone. But, but you know, a nick, a nick of time. Oh, that's a whole other story.
All right. All right. Anyway, I wish you aloha. Thank you, my brother. Mahalo.